Steve, are you able to confirm that you can hear us in council chambers?
You bet I can. Can you hear me okay?
Wonderful. We certainly can. Thank you very much.
I can hear you as well. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I know you didn't really care, but.
We're good now? Okay. Call us back to order. It is 6:33. So with some little glitches just right at the beginning. Okay. The town of Smithers acknowledges to get them down plan and though it's certain people on whose unceded traditional territory. We live, work, and play, and the public is notified this meeting is being recorded in webcast, a notice of which is on the bulletin board outside these chambers. Council, you have an agenda including a supplemental, and with your permission, before we get the motion to approve. If, how am I going to do this? I'm going to move, if council is willing, we'll just put 19-1 to Counselor Bukama's report. Am I doing this the right way? Okay. And now I'm choking. One, I have lots to say. And we're going to reorganize the 14s. So I can do that when we get there. I can let you know now. Probably just let you know now. So item 14-1, sorry, item 14-4 is becoming 14-1. 14-7 will be 14-2. 14-1 is going to be 14-3. 14-2 is 14-4. 14-3 is 14-5. 14-5 is 14-6. 14-6 is 14-7. And when we get to 14-8, we're back on track. So with those changes, can I please have a motion to approve the agenda, Counselor Bukama, Counselor Raven, all in favor? And that's Carrie. Ms. Mendel, are you okay with all that? Okay, great. Sorry, and I really am choking now, so just give me a second. I'm going to get a candy. Just the thought of reorganizing all those reports got me.
Sorry, your worship. I didn't get that list down quite. So just if you could announce what we're actually on, we moved to it. That will help. Thank you.
Okay, the main thing is the ones with presentations are being moved forward, and then I'll guide us through that. Okay. See if I get through this, or if I'm going to be handing over the chair in a minute if I can't stop choking. All in favor? I thought I did that. Any opposed? And that's Carrie. You now, Ms. Mendel. We don't have any petitions or delegations this evening. However, we are at the public comment period. If anyone wanted to speak to an item that is on our agenda. This is your moment, and you can speak for three minutes. And if there is someone who wants to speak to it, I'll invite you to come to the delegation table. Just let us know who you are and the item number. And we'll go from there. Welcome. And you can see there's just a little circle there. If you press that circle, you're, Michael, go red.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm here to speak, I think it's on 14-7 now, I think.
Maybe just give us a title after.
I know some of you, and some of you I don't, but I'll just introduce myself. I'm Murray Vetch from Westwood Enterprises, and we're the builders and agents involved in the development permit application for 3863rd Avenue. It's on the agenda this evening. This proposal has been in the works for a while now, and after numerous delays. The intended form and character of the building is laid out before you in tonight's agenda. This proposed development is for 5,500 square feet of accessible ground floor commercial space designed for medical and personal care offices. The upper floor consists of eight small to medium purpose-built rental apartments. This development fills a real need in our community for more space for family doctors and visiting specialists. This is necessary to serve our growing and aging population in easily accessible manner. This project also adds eight more badly needed rental apartments into the stretched Smithers housing market. As part of this project, we are also voluntarily replacing and improving the existing sidewalk along this section of 3rd Avenue. The site for this project is well situated to provide easy access for medical patrons, as well as to add vitality and life to the downtown core. The facade of this building, which is the subject of the Form and Character Development Permit before you tonight, has been designed to meet a variety of constraints and criteria. It has been designed to be aesthetically appealing while accommodating the spatial considerations of the building, while also complying with the constraints of the B.C. Building Code. We have worked with the Town of Smithers staff, our dining team, and our clients to try to come up with a building facade that fits the Town of Smithers aesthetic, the feel of the surrounding neighborhood, the B.C. Building Code, and the maintenance objectives of a commercial building. We have incorporated substantial natural timber elements that are both structural and decorative, as well as welcoming aged red brick that tie this building into the adjacent large building next to it on 3rd Avenue. These design features have been paired with prominent planters to break up the facade and add some greenery onto this section of 3rd. The non-combustible cladding that is required on this building is wood textured and will be installed to mimic natural wood siding. This non-combustible prefinished material will help reduce the risk of fire, as well as reduce the amount of maintenance needed to keep this building looking great for years to come. We ask this evening that you approve our Form and Character Development Permit without condition to move ahead. Without conditions to allow this vital project to move ahead without delay, as we would like to start this project as soon as possible with an intended completion of mid 2025. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vetch. And is there anyone else in the gallery wanting to speak to something on the agenda? Hello. Hello, Ms. Westby.
And I'm here representing the museum, and I think everyone knows me, but my name is Kira Westby, and I'm the curator of the museum, and I'm speaking to, I think it's now 14.1, the master plan. Yes, okay.
It was fun to reorganize all those numbers, so none of you knew what you were speaking to anymore.
Yes, that one. Thank you. So I just wanted to briefly comment on the one section specific to the Central Park building in the proposed plan that council is looking at. And understanding that it's a concept drawing, of course, and that it's likely to undergo changes and refinement. But concepts have a way of becoming just what we expect to see if we don't question them early on in the process. So just wanted to raise concern about the lack of accessible parking immediately adjacent to the Central Park building in the plan as it's currently laid out. I really feel strongly that any plans for the site must retain some vehicle access to the building, at least in front of the courtyard area perhaps. And I've previously shared these concerns on the, this draft concept with town staff and through the public feedback website that was available. So they've been shared in both those places. The main concern is that by removing all parking to the other side of where the train car is now, we're creating an accessibility barrier for seniors and for those who use scooters or wheelchairs, as they now will have to navigate pathways to the building from where the parking is located much further away. This is particularly a concern in winter. Understandably, the Central Park building, parking lot, and courtyard are often not snow cleared until either later in the day or the next day after a heavy snowfall. There's obviously other places that need it first, but clearing those pathways, if that's the only way to access the building, would then be a concern, as would just the way that those pathways will end up in the winter, if that's the only access. It also just makes it generally less pleasant to have to walk in minus 30 from way over there to the building. But, so those are some general concerns for all users of the building. From the museum specifically, the only way to get larger items in and out of the building is through the front door. There are no loading doors on the back of the building. Those are emergency exits only. And there's no egress that allows for things to be brought in through the back. So just this morning, we had a truck back up, oh, sorry, with, okay, we had a truck back up, and we were unloading 17, eight-foot-long boxes. And last year, we had to unload a crate of mammoth bones. So we need to have the ability for larger vehicles to pull up to the building to be able to unload things. And also, too, I have to pull my car up to unload items that are stored on the second floor of this building. And so obviously, having more green space at Central Park would be great, and I look forward to future discussions with other Central Park neighbors. I think that this plan for the area needs more feedback from Central Park users specifically. A meeting with all of us together, we're all neighbors, we're all used to working together, but that hasn't happened yet to this point. So that will be really important going forward. And yeah, I think that's everything. Yeah, right on time.
Thank you. Thank you for the second. Thanks so much. Ms. Tarnish.
I had to bring my readers, because I printed this out a little small. Good evening, Mayor Atrell, councilors and staff. So I am also speaking to the Master Recreation Plan 14.1 on your agenda tonight. And I do want to recognize there are tremendous amount of work that's gone into this process. However, I do feel that the arts and culture in Central Park, part of the plan, did not receive enough attention or due process to accept the plan as it stands, even though it is a concept at this time. In the consultation phase, contractors thought that they spoke to the Smithers Art Gallery, when in fact, they spoke to another organization. I can only speculate it was the B.D. Arts Council from other conversations I've had, but the only input our organization was able to have was kind of after the consultation process through the survey and in-person comments at the open house. As one of the few arts organizations with a physical location in Central Park, I feel like this was an oversight. The input provided by our organization has not made its way into this new amended plan that's being presented tonight. The gallery has huge reservations about the accessibility of the Central Park plan in its entirety, not just to the Central Park building. While it increases the green space, it relies heavily on walking from parking areas into all of the buildings in the culture hub. Specifically for the gallery, there's no parking or access to loading at the front of our building, which, as Kira has mentioned, for the museum is an issue, is also for the art gallery, as we change over every four to five weeks and require vehicle access to get all the artwork out of people's vehicles. The reliance of pathways to access all of these buildings from the parking areas brings up the question of who is clearing these pathways and how quickly. Currently, Kira and I do a lot of shoveling in the winter to make sure that those spaces are available, as we know that there are other priorities for town staff for clearing spaces, and we can manage that, but going all the way over to the other side is going to be a little bit more difficult. I am concerned that arts and culture groups from Central Park were not brought together to discuss this specific area. As a group, we often work collaboratively to enhance each other's programmings and events, and we would love that opportunity to do that. So I'm pleased that our specific area has been identified as needing more input with the kind of red dotted lines that will put on the, or that are on the plan. But I'd like council to look for additional input for the whole Central Park portion of this plan. Some of the items identified as potentially happening in the next few years will greatly impact the rest of the plan and require much more consultation and input related to accessibility and the community needs before it's adopted. Thank you. Mexico. Is it already on? It is. I'm also speaking to 14-1. So hello, everybody. My name is Megan Brady, and I represent CICK, Smithers Community Radio, which is situated in the train car in Central Park. The upcoming Parks and Recreation Plan has a significant implications for our organization. However, we did not receive consultation regarding this matter. I would like to emphasize to council that should this plan be adopted, it is imperative to involve direct users and residents of Central Park in the consultation process. Establishing strong relationships with those that actively contribute to the arts and culture within the park is crucial for creating a vibrant community hub, as is referenced in the plan. As the saying goes, nothing about us without us. There are a couple of concerns regarding the plan to be addressed. Firstly, CICK will require vehicle access for loading and unloading gear. It is essential that we have access available at both the front and the back of the train to facilitate this. Consideration must be given to curb dips, or whatever it's called, and clear pathways on the grass for our vehicles. Secondly, the sandy dump location is no longer included in the plan, and we urge council to select a site that is as far away from us as possible, given that it generates unpleasant odors that negatively impact the atmosphere of our outdoor events, such as the annual DECKFest. I would like to express our gratitude that CICK will remain in its current location, allowing us to continue providing stage and sound equipment for farmers' market, provided it is feasible and they are within proximity to us. If the plan goes ahead as is laid out, we would need to build a stage at the back of the train car, which I believe we have already applied for some funding to do this. I am unsure of the farmers' market satisfaction with the proposed location near the firehouse, so it would be beneficial for the council to engage with them directly. It is important to reiterate that we have not been consulted throughout this process. The only reason that there may have been a change regarding our proposed location is that we reached out in the last days of comment period to ensure our voices were included. If council approves this plan, I urge you to recognize the necessity for substantial consultation with the primary residents and stakeholders in Central Park, including the farmers' market, Chamber of Commerce, Info Center, Museum, Art Gallery, and CICK, Smithers Community Radio. We have indicated our willingness to engage in discussions and hope to be consulted prior to any developments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for the public comment period? Already, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm going to move on. We don't have a public hearing tonight. Counsel, next is item 8.1, the minutes of August 27th for approval, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Bukama, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that is Carrie. 8-2, Committee of the Whole from August 20th for approval. Counselor Raven, I'm having trouble with your name tonight, which is really weird. And a second, or Counselor Bukama, any errors? All in favor? Opposed? And that's Carrie. Thank you. And item nine, items to be released. There's something, I believe, Mr. Schroeder.
Thank you very much, Mayor Atrell. Yes, there was one motion for release this evening, and that being that Council appoint Sheena Miller, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, as the representative from the Smithers District Chamber of Commerce, to the Select Committee on Community Safety and Well-being for a two-year term.
Thanks for that. And that is just for information, and we, there is no business arising, and we're up to council reports, and this was one of those changes. So we have moved in 19-1 to your report, Counselor Bukama, and over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Atrell. So first of all, on August 29th, I, along with Mayor Atrell and Counselor Patterson, attended the initial meeting of the Select Committee on Community Safety and Well-being. Being the initial meeting, it was more about organization, choosing a chair and a vice chair, a chance just for the various members to get to know one another. I was struck by just what a good variety of people there were on this committee, which I think is really important to the success of the committee, and I thought it was just a very good initial meeting, and there will be many more to follow. I think their hope is to meet once a month. I'd also like to move adoption of the minutes of that meeting, which are in 19-1, including the bolded motion regarding the addition of a member from the Lake Babine Nation. There was a feeling that that was an oversight, not having a member from the Lake Babine Nation on this committee.
Thanks, Counselor Bukama. Just for clarity, Mr. Schroeder, are we going to approve that when we, or do we want to deal with the motion separately, the bolded motion, a separate motion?
Thank you, Mayor. We're not required to adopt the minutes themselves, but we can certainly ratify the motion if council were interested in pursuing that. Okay.
Okay, so then the right motion is just to deal with the, the bolded motion.
That's correct.
So change that from adopting the minutes to simply approving the bolded motion regarding the addition of a member from Lake Babine Nation.
Thanks, Counselor Bukama. A second, or please. Counselor Raven, any discussion? Oh, Counselor Ray.
Hi, yeah, because it was a late item, I'm just kind of reading this. My concern all along about this committee, council removed the temporary overnight shelter area, homeless encampment, whatever, from the terms of reference for a reason, and it really appears to me that the committee is already starting to steer the conversation towards the homeless encampment. I don't want to not include the Lake Babine Nation. That doesn't send a very good message, but I'm very concerned that we're just going to end up with a whole bunch of recommendations around the homeless encampment and nothing about the greater community at large. We're trying to address the crime problem. And not the homeless encampment problem. They're tied together a bit, but not every crime is committed by somebody from the homeless encampment. So I'm just putting that out there in the public. I've said it privately a few times, but I am concerned about that.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. That, I think that was brought up during the committee, but you're right. I mean, Counselor Bukama can jump in. The focus fairly quickly went to that. That said, I think the recommendation to specifically add Lake Babine is, that's something I can support, but your broader statement, I think, was reflected in the conversation there. Counselor Bukama, I don't know if you want to comment on it?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly, we can certainly bring that concern to the next meeting, and I think, yeah, there definitely is that temptation for it just to be, for the work of this committee to very much be focused on the homeless encampment, and I think you're 100% correct in saying that's not the sole intention of that committee. So I think we can convey your concerns at the next meeting, which will be held sometime in October.
Yeah, attention was brought to the fact that the committee did have a terms of reference. It was the first meeting, and so there was lots of conversation around the table. The, you know, the chair was selected, and I think there's an opportunity to communicate with the chair and the vice chair, you know, if they want to talk with staff, or if they want to talk with either Counselor Bukama or Counselor Patterson when she's returned, to be sure that we're staying on track with the terms of reference. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? And that's Carrie. And I'm just going to note, I'm not an advisory, and I'm not a committee member, but I was actually there, and I don't show up. So I show up as talking, but not on the list of people there, which is kind of weird. But anyway. I was there. Anything else, Counselor Bukama?
Yes, and I also attended the Support Local Social on September the 6th, an event sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. It was actually a really enjoyable event. Just people dropping in and out. And I just, I've said it before, but I just want to thank the local chamber for the incredible job they do of promoting, supporting, advocating for local business. I think the work they do in our community is just invaluable.
Thanks, Counselor Bukama. Counselor Elliott sends regrets. Counselor Leonard?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson is on leave, and we are at Counselor Raven.
So my report is in the agenda with one addition, just because it happened after the report was submitted. So on September the 6th, I also attended the Support Local Social, along with Counselor Bukama and Mayor Atrell. Again, just kudos to the chamber, and it's always good to see the variety of businesses that we have. Local kombucha, there is ice cream, there is face painting. It was a really, really good event. Local musicians. And then that evening, there was the art gallery opening, and Lori Goldberg came up from Vancouver to share her collection. So it was just a really good night of art and conversation, and I recommend people going to the art gallery and checking that out before October the 5th.
Thanks, Counselor Raven. Counselor Ray?
Nothing to report, although I did want to just mention that my agenda, I mean, it's kind of set up weird. If it looks like I'm not paying attention, I'm probably looking at my agenda off to my right.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. No problem. We've all had the experience of trying to figure out how to hold your agenda package on your Zoom camera. My report is there, along with the ongoing or the standing item from the Strategic Priorities Committee. So if there's any questions, I'll take them, and otherwise, move on. Okay. Let's jump to the 14s, because everyone is quite confused about which 14 is going to come first. So the new 14-1 is the report for Mr. George on the Smithers Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and Mr. George, I'll just turn it to you, because this is one where we have presentation.
Excellent. Thank you, worship. I'll just go through the report to council first, and then turn it over to our consulting team for the presentation here. So you'll notice the report to council here, the Um, so you'll notice the report to council here, this is, um, putting forward the recommendation that council adopts, the Smithers Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This process, uh, has had a full, um, engagement process to date. Town selected, um, uh, shortlisted, uh, consulting firms and started the project in summer, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. So we've been about a year on the process and feel that we've had a wide variety of engagement and, um, have put together a plan that reflects the views of the, uh, community and, um, the next steps for parks and recreation over the next ten years. Just noting, just pull up some notes here. Uh, just noting some of the comments, um, around, uh, the phasing approach. So council will note, and, um, Steve, our consultant from R C Strategies, will go into a little bit of detail around some of the, um, comments that were brought up earlier, um, just around, um, some of the different phasing. So we do have for Central Park and Heritage Park, a phased approach, um, that will showcase, um, a variety of years from, from one to three, three to five, and, uh, seven to ten years moving forward. Uh, the plan does not go into the level of detail, um, around, um, the exact locations of, um, whether it's, um, uh, lines or loading zones or whatnot. That level of detail will be completed with a more in deep, in-depth, um, plan for particular areas, which will, um, have additional, um, layers of consultation and engagement on that. Um, so I think I'll turn, turn the, um, presentation over to, uh, Steve from R C Strategies here. I'll share the screen there, Steve, and then if there's any particular questions from council afterwards, uh, I'd love to answer those. Thanks.
Welcome, Steve. Maybe we'll just get a voice check there.
Yeah, testing, testing.
That's great. We can hear you. Welcome.
Yeah, great to, uh, great to be here this evening, and thanks for, um, yeah, for having me on your agenda here, and this is a really exciting opportunity, I think, for us to to review, um, a, a final draft version of the, the master plan here. So I see it's up on the screen there, so if we can just advance to the next slide, please. Well, I see, uh, someone's email now.
We've been having that kind of evening, Steve, so bear with us.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm glad you made it through there, uh, Madam Worship. You sound like you're having some difficulty earlier, so, uh, glad you're okay.
Most of my difficulty was with numbers, I think. Mr. George just got the presentation right.
There we go. Okay, great. Yeah, if we could just advance to the, the agenda slide there, the overview slide, please. Um, yeah, so in terms of what we were looking to present here this evening, um, really just want to review the, the project process and the different inputs that have led us to get to where we are, uh, which is to have a, a final version of the master plan here to share with you. Uh, we want to then spend, uh, a few minutes just going over that draft master plan, um, in terms of kind of reviewing the, the core content. And then, uh, finally, uh, before we get into questions, just spending a few minutes on the updated park concepts, I know that that, there's certainly a lot of, um, a lot of focus on that within the context of the master plan, and just want to talk about, uh, some of the changes made, as well as outline, a little bit further to what Mr. George talked about in terms of next steps and a recommended path forward, uh, for, for you as a community on those. So, um, if we could just keep going to the next slide here. Um, just wanted to review, kind of take a step back and review the, the master plan purpose. So our master plan process was really tasked with, uh, four elements. First was just getting a handle broadly on the current state of parks and recreation in Smithers, the, sort of the good, the bad, um, the opportunities that are available, things like that. Secondly, coming out of that, uh, based on the research and engagement, was identifying some key focus areas and priorities. And then thirdly, um, it was included within the R P that we responded to, was developing some, some very kind of high-level concepts and, and, uh, conceptual vision for Central Park and Heritage Park, and certainly a pre, a lot of passion around those particular sites. And, uh, what we've developed, um, is intended to be more of a launching off point for future community engagement and refinement of those. And then lastly, all, and ultimately, uh, the master plan is intended to provide you as council decision makers and, uh, your administration with a, a reference point or a strategic guide that can inform future decision-making. Next slide, please. Excuse me, uh, master plan process. So, uh, really, there are three sequential phases to the master plan, which we kicked off, just a little bit over a year ago, so fairly, uh, fairly consistent timeframe for most master plans that, that we certainly work on or that we see, uh, in other communities. And, and really that first bucket there, number one, is that learning about the state of parks and recreation in Smithers. So we do a bunch of research and engagement. From there, we then, uh, developed some strategic direction, um, kind of make sense of all that research and engagement. And through that step number two there, um, we engage with our task force, who I, I certainly don't want to forget to mention their important role in this process. Our task force had a, a really diverse mix of folks, uh, from throughout the community, and they were really, really important in terms of being a lens for us to, to run ideas up the flagpole. Um, and obviously, we've met with council a couple times as well through that kind of second bucket of the process there. And then that led us into developing the actual master plan. So we had a draft, uh, we took that to the community for comment. I've got a lot of comment. And then, uh, we have a final master plan here, based on, uh, a lot of what we've heard back, and, um, like I said, the process has been about a year. Let's go to the next slide, please. So there, there's three project documents, um, at the end of the day here. So we have obviously the master plan, which is the one in the middle there, uh, which is a, a refined and tuned-up version of the master plan. And then there are two background documents that complement it. There is the Current State Research Report, which is all of the, the non-engagement findings from the research and analysis we did. And then to the right, uh, is the What We Heard Report, which has the community engagement findings from the, um, the first phase or first stage of engagement that we did, which occurred, uh, mostly through late two thousand and twenty-three and early two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide, please. So just wanted to touch on, uh, against all those engagement and research input. So on the left there, um, you know, a number of different ways that we try to explore gaps, strengths, opportunities, weaknesses around parks and rec in the community. Obviously, that includes an inventory of amenities and spaces. Some spatial analysis or another term for that, uh, probably better term would be mapping, um, so looking at resident access to parks and active transportation and, and all of that. Uh, we look at provincial and regional and national trends and best practices. We look at population and demographics and, and try to understand how that may impact needs for parks and recreation. Look at benchmarking Smithers with other comparable communities, and then we also undertook some functional assessments of the park systems, essentially visits to, to all the park spaces in the community. Of course, community engagement is extremely important in a process like this, and, uh, our intent through the engagement process was to try to touch as many corners of the community as we could. Um, obviously, not gonna talk to every resident and, and probably not every group as well, but we really did our best to, to reach out as broadly as we can, and, um, you can see the the different ways that we engage through a mix of surveys and discussion sessions. And I just wanted to note that through the process between the group survey and the discussion sessions, we did engage with thirty-nine different community organizations across kind of a whole breadth of different activity types. So definitely feel like we, you know, we did talk to a number of different groups and, and, and perspectives. But obviously, um, you know, probably not every group that exists in the community, but we really did try to do our best to, to get a, a wide range of perspectives, um, to kind of color, um, some of the outcomes of the master plan. Next slide, please. So just in terms of a very high-level overview of the key content that's within the master plan, um, so there's six service delivery objectives, and those are really those philosophical foundations. Sort of the, the elevator pitch, if someone were to ask the town, um, if, you know, hey, why, why do you actually, why are you in the business of providing parks and recreation services? Those service delivery objectives would articulate why and, and what the town is looking to achieve through its, um, you know, significant investment in parks and recreation. Uh, we have four key directions, which are those, uh, kind of higher, um, higher elevated or more significant recommendations or focus areas for the next ten years. Uh, we have thirty-eight amenity strategies, and they're a mix of, of different, um, recommendations pertaining for different amenity types. A lot of them also advance the key directions as well. We have four service delivery strategies, so um, and within those are ten actions that are really focused, not so much on infrastructure, like the key directions or a lot of the amenity strategies, but more just how the town works with groups and how the town should be, uh, optimizing how it delivers services. And then lastly, um, in, in the, kind of the back end of the master plan, is an implementation plan, which, uh, essentially puts the different, uh, amenity strategies and key directions and service delivery strategies into short, medium, and long-term. identifies, um, some kind of high-level resourcing as well, uh, where, where pertinent. Next slide, please. So just to touch on, on the four key directions, so again, these are the elevated recommendations within the master plan. The first being, um, where we'll spend the majority of our attention here and the rest of the presentation, is the reimagining of Heritage Park and Central Park. Um, secondly, creating more structure and purpose around park experiences and uses. Thirdly, I'm prioritizing trail investment with a really focus on connectivity and, um, and all-season opportunities. So looking at trails is more than just, um, you know, a non-snow season amenity and, and really trying to leverage their, their benefit throughout the year. And then, uh, the fourth key direction is to prioritize working with partners to meet community needs for a large multi-use, uh, large-band multi-use space. Next slide, please. So, um, I mentioned earlier on, uh, when we had the draft master plan, we took that out to the community. Excuse me, and, uh, we did that, um, there's, there's really kind of two ways that we did that. The first was, uh, an in-person open house event in, uh, early June. And we had, uh, you know, roughly about seventy, uh, folks, uh, kind of flow through, uh, the arena, uh, for that event and had a lot of really good conversation. Um, you can see the picture with some of the panels and lots of, lots of sticky notes, about a hundred and thirty of them, uh, that were provided. So that was great feedback. We also had the materials available online throughout the rest of June and into early July. Uh, and we also, uh, convened a handful of discussions with groups that, that kind of reached out, looking for, um, kind of more robust feedback and, and, uh, C I C K, uh, is an example, is one of those groups. So, uh, that was really good for us to, to kind of hear their concerns and, um, and try to, uh, understand how they can be addressed in the updated concepts, uh, as best as possible. Uh, so a number, I just want to touch on a few of the key themes from the feedback, and obviously, this isn't gonna do justice to the, you know, the a hundred and thirty sticky notes and the, you know, the seventy online responses, but these were some of the more prevalent comments that we heard. Uh, overall, uh, I would say the mid, vast majority of the comments were supportive of, of kind of the overarching notion of the master plan. Some may have disagreed with certain elements of the, of the concept plans, or they wanted to see something built out a little bit more, but the majority of comments were kind of supportive. Sort of overall of the, the process and the plan, excuse me, um. There're quite a bit of excitement about the, the opportunity to revitalize Central Park and Heritage Park. Just what everybody realizes that those are, are probably underused and under-animated spaces. Um, but certainly, there was a lot of feedback. Uh, I've said the majority of the feedback was on, um, just the different elements and and some thoughts around the different amenities and, and whether we had that right or not. So a few of the, the things we heard quite a bit about was the location of the outdoor rink. Um, and, and kind of the desire to maybe have it relocated in the concepts back into Central Park for a variety of reasons. Um, the importance of keeping the railcar in its current location and the benefits of doing so, um, and kind of the synergies of that railcar space and C I C K with, um, the museum and art gallery and just generally kind of location on the site. We heard quite a bit from, uh, from the sport court users about the, you know, with the pickleball and other activities and and, uh, the need to accommodate that in a more robust way in the community through, uh, you know, through dedicated pickleball courts or multi-use courts that could be used for pickleball, number of different perspectives there. Heard, uh, as, as further to some of your speakers there tonight, quite a bit around parking and access, and I'll talk a little bit, and accessibility, and I'll talk a little bit more about that um, in a couple slides. And then, uh, we also heard quite a bit about the Sannie Station. Both concerns over where we had it on the draft concepts, the location generally within, uh, within Central Park. Ideas of where it should best go in the community, and I'll, I'll speak to that in a, in a few minutes as well. Uh, we heard, uh, another theme we heard quite a bit about was just the importance of the town, um, recognizing the importance of investing in aging infrastructure, especially playgrounds and ball diamonds. Quite a bit of advocacy for a splash park, uh, was represented, uh, through the, uh, particularly the open house and some of the online comments. And then, um, the, quite a bit of support for the recommendation pertaining to a, a large multi-use indoor space, uh, at some point in the future. So, uh, I wanted to spend a few minutes just talking about, uh, the updated park concepts, and then we'll go through the images, uh, on subsequent slides here. But just a summary of some of the key changes that we did make, um, based on feedback that we heard and, and kind of going back to the drawing board as a team a little bit. So we, we have relocated the, the outdoor rink back to Central Park. In, in a somewhat similar position, different orientation than where it is right now, and integrate it with the market pavilion space. Um, and, you know, again, this is probably hear me say this a couple of times. I just want to reiterate that, um, that, that, this is just a concept. And, you know, we've, we understand the concerns about how concepts can become reality, but, you know, the reality is there is gonna need to be some further design work and and, uh, some kind of a deep dive of engagement with the, the various stakeholders on the site. But we do conceptually, uh, see quite a bit of synergy between the outdoor rink and, and a market pavilion space, uh. See, there's no ice in the summer, and there's an opportunity for that to be kind of a space that, that is used for, for market and, and adjacent activities. The train car in the original draft concepts was moved to a different location. We've moved it back to the current location, so, uh, you know, hearing what the the, uh, the main tenant group, uh, had to say, um, and we've also identified that there needs to be some kind of enhancements around that space, which would include accessibility, but also kind of beautification and, and generally kind of, uh, a re, revision of that kind of arts and culture hub space within Central Park, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a sec as well. Um, where the outdoor rink was in Heritage Park, we've identified that that would be a prime location for a, a multi-use sport court or a sport court of some type. Um, so that's, that's, uh, being adjusted. We've identi- we've also identified a number of additional natural barriers, uh, for Central Park. So in some of those follow-up conversations we had around, uh, with different stakeholders around the concept, one concern they raised was just the, kind of the road noise. And, um, that's probably more of a detailed design conversations, but we did want to show that we did hear from those groups, and we've adjusted some of the kind of the tree features and kind of mocked up some what could be kind of buring within the site as well. So that's being adjusted. The Sannie Station is being removed from all the concepts for now, and we've, we've narrated in the master plan that there is a need to to study the best place for that in the community. Um, you know, there are a whole bunch of different perspectives, uh, on, on the best location for that. And, and obviously, Sannie Stations, um, you know, there's some pros and cons to them being on certain, on certain sites, and, you know, that's a bit of a technical analysis that, uh, just at the end of the day, we, we thought was best looked at, kind of beyond the scope of the master plan. And then lastly, um, in the updated concepts, we've identified, um, a phasing plan for, for those sites and appropriate sites. And, and the, the phasing plan is kind of developed based on a few different considerations. One would just be a logical sequencing, so there's some kind of technical aspects that come into play, like, sort of like building something, like some things. You have to have kind of initial building blocks to build subsequent, subsequent things, so that's part of it. Um, we've tried to, to consider realistic resourcing and, uh, a few other considerations as well. So we, we've developed a bit of a phasing plan, um, for you to take and, and probably further tune up as well. Next slide, please. So, uh, it would just go quickly through the, the different concepts here. So Heritage Park, um, as I mentioned, site E or location E here was where the outdoor rink was. We've turned that to a sport court. Again, wanted to, to reiterate that, uh, so, the, kind of the block A there, that community green future recreation center building site. So we've kept that as, um, kind of just for now, in the short to medium term, a passive use type of space. But the master plan identifies long-term, looking at the potential for a community center, large-span, multi-use type facility, particularly if those needs aren't met through, um, the planned expansion of the, the Buckley Valley Regional Pool and Rec Center. So just again, wanted to, that hasn't changed, but just wanted to reiterate that that space is, is a bit of a, a kind of bit, sort of kept for that type of amenity. Next slide, please. So this reflects the phasing plan, and again, a number of considerations here, um, both kind of technical and, uh, a little bit more logical. So, um, yeah, the phase one amenities there, you can see in yellow, so, you know, those would include the sport court, as well as the kind of the, the washroom storage, um, uh, as well as the, the dog park. And then, um, the loop walking trail as well is kind of logical to build in that initial phase. And then phase two amenities would be that, um, children's destination play area, and, you know, again, that's a space that requires a bit more engagement with the community and looking at whether that's, uh, you know, kind of a, a dry play space, or whether that, there's a splash pad or splash park opportunity as part of that play space as well. So, um, just wanted to, to kind of provide this again as a bit of a starting point, recognizing that not everything can happen at once. And, and there's also gonna need to be some, some further kind of resourcing conversations with the various stakeholders on, on both these sites. Next, uh, next slide, please. So Central Park, um, so I, I talked to, uh, earlier on, uh, just about some of the changes made, so you can see the outdoor rink is back on the the outdoor rink is back on the site here, D with E being the the skate shack. Reorientation to provide the opportunity and might be hard to see, but there's some kind of door indoors that are kind of mocked in there on that rink that are adjacent to sites to C to block C, which would be the the market pavilion space. So again, we see there kind of being a natural synergy there, you know, subsequent to further discussion with with the site stakeholders. And then the other the other one, I think I just wanted to kind of draw attention to, and we've talked a little bit about it before, is is kind of this A B sort of kind of arts and cultural precinct within the site, if you will. So we've shown out, we've kind of mocked a building on there just to show scale, but and this is narrated out in the master plan. Really, there's a need to kind of look at what that entire block of space should be in the future. And there's a number of different variables around that. Obviously, the museum and art gallery is an aging building that's going to require some reinvestment. There needs to be some analysis about whether a a new indoor facility could even be attached to it or whether it's it's separate within that locker space. We've identified that there's a need to kind of do some enhancements, accessibility and otherwise in and around the rail car. So definitely appreciate and and acknowledge the the concerns raised by some of the speakers around accessibility and and access and, you know, and and kind of the the sort of relationship between all the different amenities within the site. And we're not, we're not trying to downplay those at all, but there there's just more design work and and more engagement with stakeholders. It needs to occur to help flush out some of the some of the aspects. And that's why it's kind of been blocked off just with a few kind of amenities and spaces more kind of mocked up within it. But don't want to, don't want to suggest that that's in any way final. This is a little bit of a kind of a Lego block exercise at this point that requires a a bit more refinement. Next slide, please. So again, phasing plan, yellow phase one, pink phase two and blue phase three. So you can see we've identified the the outdoor rink and as well as the picnic and and play area, which is a pretty easy win site area H there within the site as being kind of phase one, the majority of the other elements being phase three, but with phase with the visitor center being identified as a as a phase two element. And within this phasing plan, just given the the significant cost probably associated with with a lot of these amenities, there's probably going to even need to be a further breakout of phasing and and a lot of discussions around resourcing responsibilities between the different stakeholders and fundraising and and all of that. But this is again, just a bit of a sequential or logical sequencing of how we we would see these amenities kind of rolling out over time or suggesting that they do. Next slide, please. So that all kind of culminates in what are the next steps here? And, you know, we again, I just want to reiterate that the master plan, you know, master plan process isn't a detailed design process for a specific site. A master plan is kind of a broad look at parks and recreation in the community. So we we certainly acknowledge the the limitations of of probably not being able to advance this all as in in the level of detail as some might want to see, but we have outlined what we would suggest next steps being based on how a lot of these kind of big park processes normally unfold and how they can be done kind of most efficiently and effectively. So you can see there's a graphic there. And I just kind of walked through that. The first phase, so we're assessing suggesting two phases of engagement. The first being really that deep detail dive into the different components with the stakeholders. So what one of the speakers mentioned earlier about getting all the groups together in a room, hundred percent agree, like that's what needs to occur through this first phase. Or we sort of get everybody together probably a number of times and really get into the weeds on on some of the details of the different aspects of the site. Take that information, update the concepts, get to a more detailed level of design, whether it's a more detailed level of concept design or what's sometimes called schematic design, which is kind of partially along the way to what what is called detail design, then bring everybody back together for a second round of engagement to to kind of vet those more detailed design images and then ultimately go into detailed design and development and tendering and and all of that. And I think it's important to note that resourcing and fundraising, there needs to be a plan for it. And there needs to be conversations in the short term with the different stakeholders around who's exactly able and willing and responsible for what elements of the site. The intent here is not to suggest that the the town is responsible for funding all of these different amenities. It's going to need to be a community-driven resourcing plan here with, you know, with grants and community fundraising and all that. So those conversations need to occur throughout, but starting here in the short term. And yeah, ultimately, this is the process we think that best positions these two-part concepts for for success here in the future. Next slide, please. So lastly, just wanted to touch on the implementation plan and that's outlined, and I've just thrown a screenshot here from the first part of that in on the on the right side of the slide there. So section seven has that implementation plan, and you can see that there's there's kind of some some time suggested timing. Just want to touch on a few key factors to implementing a master plan based on our experience having done this. You know, hundreds of communities nationally, you know, I think ultimately a good master plan, you need to use it and refer to it when making decisions. Kind of the old cliche of it's no good if it's just on a on a bookshelf. So that would be the first bit of recommendation there. I'm specific to the implementation plan. Suggest that you review that every two or three years, if not annually, preferably annually. Implementation, timing and and all that. It's going to change over time as priorities change and, you know, things unexpected things come up and resourcing opportunities and grants come about. So you want to continue to update that. And then we're also suggesting that you would consider a master plan update in five to seven years. And that doesn't need to be a, you know, a significant process where you engage a consultant. That's something you could just do internally. And just kind of identify areas that are 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 worthwhile having a quick update. And then lastly, just to continue to ensure that the that future planning aligns with the master plan's values and focus areas. So as you do cite specific plans or feasibility studies or needs assessments for some some of the specific recommendations in the master plan, just continuing to go back and ensure that they align with the service delivery objectives and and the overall intent and recommendations and themes of the master plan. So with that, happy to take any questions or or comments from council.
Thank you. Council, does anyone have questions or comments that they want to make or share? Counsel Raven.
So thank you so much for the presentation, and I really do appreciate that one slide where it does show that this isn't the final product. This is definitely just more of the broader concepts, but this does not by any means mean that we are done, and this is something that we will continue to bring back to the community. I also want to do a little bit of a yippee for the O D R being back at Central Park. That was definitely something that I was happy to see in there. But yeah, overall, I am happy with this plan and I'm looking forward to hearing what everyone else has to say.
Thanks, Counsel Raven. Counsel Bukama.
Thanks, Mayor Rachel. I also like the plan. One of, I don't really have questions, but one of the things I really appreciated you mentioning is a recognition that this is something that the town cannot entirely pay for. And I I appreciate you saying that this is more something we want to commit to together as a community and then get creative in the ways we find financing and and hopefully we'll be able to pursue lots of grant funding along the way, but certainly not something we can tackle all by ourselves as a town. So I appreciate that recognition in your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Bukama. Counsel Ray.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm I'm pretty happy with the final final product. And I wanted to thank Steve for kind of on behalf of the the committee that appreciated being able to give some insight and and hopefully steer things along. And I just wanted to kind of comment on the two kind of concept plans. I think it's been well covered that it was, it was good to hear those concerns from the folks in Central Park. But for me, having had a Central Park plan on on council strategic priorities for probably twelve or thirteen years. It's even good to see a concept plan because it can get us talking and hopefully, you know, Counsel Bukama hit on it. It's really going to depend on on what kind of money we have, what kind of grants are available. You know, we might hear with a new government that they're going to really prioritize something that that maybe isn't phase three, but they're going to prioritize it now. So it does keep it flexible. But I think having a general idea of what things are going to be used for is because what we were aiming for in a year, and I think it's what we got. Because I know sometimes when a potential future amenity comes along without even a concept plan as to where we might put things, we've been kind of been forced to put things around the community. Sometimes childcare is the latest one where we where we kind of we have land available. This is where it can go. Housing, et cetera, but it's nice to have that basis for talk, beginning talk about culture and recreation. Amenities where they're going to go. So, yeah, and I think definitely a robust public consultation is is definitely step number one. So appreciate the thoughts in there. So thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Counsel Leonard.
I'll also agree. I think it's it's a great plan and I do support it. I'm happy to see that you did listen to the public consultation and and made some amendments to the original plan. Given that input and it's nice to see, I do share the same concerns of the the individuals that came tonight about parking and access. So I was also happy to hear that, you know, any major development or change would would require more public consultation. So I do appreciate that. And knowing that this is a high level plan, and I think it's a good one.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard. Yeah, I don't I don't think I have anything too different to say. I did sort of dig into some of the strategies and some of the detail, and I I think you know, maybe just randomly some comments that will not have any effect on supporting the overall plan, but some of the things that jumped out at me was just your comment on how much we spend now per year on recreation. It's not insignificant. If I've got it right, it's two million dollars. It's not insignificant for a community our size. And I think it speaks to the desire of residents to have good recreation developed. So it's like a good signal forward. And, you know, some of the things, because it's going to take us time to get the money to do some of the things that people want to happen. You know, there were comments on trails and trail use and even the tree canopy, whether or not you know, in other parts of the community, we're going to take down trees or replace trees can give a sense of you know, calming and park-like feeling in other parts and around other trails. So I think there was some narrative in here as well that can guide us a little bit, not just on parks, trails and recreation facilities, but in how we approach the overall feel of the community. And I I did notice that, you know, when people show up, their message gets heard. So there was definitely a cohort of people with a message in some of the the public meetings. And I think, you know, it speaks to the fact when people really want things and they gather all their friends and they show up, like it makes a mark. And as we go forward, it will be interesting how we're able to engage with the with the entire community as much as we can to figure out what what's the desire going forward. You know, I I think one thing as well, like things are going to jump to the surface outside of a planning strategy. And the visitor center comes to mind, there's going to be you know, further discussions on that just based on need. And sometimes something falls apart and all of a sudden it becomes your priority. But what I do see here are, you know, especially in the strategies is a way to sort of consider our way through with specific amenities. And we're just going to have to be live to the fact that things are going to fail on their own time. And what we might like to see as priorities might shift over time. But I think the strategy documents are really helpful. So with that, yeah, thanks for the presentation and our staff as well for a sort of persevering. Will said it's been more than a year. Things take time. And now we're at the point of adopting a strategy and beginning the work to get some of the pieces done. So it ends something and starts a whole bunch of something else. So thanks, staff and Steve for the presentation and your work with your team. Okay, we have a recommendation. If there's more questions, now's the time. And otherwise, I'll sort of look for a motion. Counsel Bukama.
Thanks, Mayor Rachel. I'll move adoption of the master plan.
Okay, is there a second or? Counsel Raven and Counsel Raven, did you have a question too, or was that just moving? Counsel Raven. I was talking to you. You were seconding. Okay, Counsel Ray, did you have a question or were you seconding?
I was seconding.
All right, lots of seconders. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Thanks, everyone, for all your work. It's a simple vote when it comes to it. Okay, counsel, we're going to move on to another one that's going to take some time. Does anyone need a couple of minutes? Then we need a little quick break. Okay, let's just go quick. Get seven thirty four, six minutes back in our chairs. Gives time for the next group to get ready. Six-minute break. Six minute break. Not not ready? There we go. Okay. Uh, so we're at the new fourteen point two. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Allen. To kind of give us the opening comments and introduce the delegation for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Atrol and uh. Uh, I'd just like to talk about the report really briefly and then turn it over to our consultants from WSP. Uh, so this this is about a project on Princess Street. Between eleventh and fifteenth avenues and it's regarding our uh the poor state of. Condition of our sidewalk. That's the that's the main reason that that this has come before you. Um, back in February, uh, the town did award the this contract to WSP to. Redesign the sidewalk um for this section of Princess Street. Uh, and it's very, the reason it's gone to um. Out to the public or to private uh. For redesign is is because it's complicated. Uh, there's uh the sidewalk for sure. Um, um, bringing the road standard up to uh or bringing the road up to the current standard. Uh, drainage is a big issue in that area. Um, and a number of other factors, but um through the process, um, WSP has. Um, enlightened us with this idea of um bringing some more um just considering more active transportation. Into the into the redesign of Princess Street. And um, so we thought we would uh let them bring some options to council and then. Uh, if council uh agrees and approves the recommendation, then we would take this to um. A public engagement process. Uh, this fall and then this this public engagement would uh help. Uh, finalize the design of the of that Princess Street section. So. That's where we're at and I'd like to turn it over to uh WSP now. So we have Alan Kindred and Erica Hoggland.
Welcome. Pretty you. You can take it. Um, can drop this Hawkland as you wish.
Um, yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, thank you for taking uh some time to to hear what we have to say tonight. Um, as Mark mentioned, um, we were retained by the town to complete the detailed design for. The full reconstruction of Princess Street um from Fulton Avenue to Fifteenth Avenue. Um, we're we're here tonight to talk to you about um considering alternative cross sections to. Um, as an alternative to the town's existing bylaw. Um, and with the town committing to fully reconstructing the street. Now's the time to really consider um alternative options and how we wanna uh see that street function in the future. Um, for tonight's presentation, we've been we've prepared three um optional cross sections that are alternatives to the bylaw. And uh we'll get into those a little later in the presentation. Next slide, please. Okay. Uh, we can even skip past this one. I did delete a few slides just to try and keep the presentation brief tonight. Um, so I thought we'd start by just looking at the town's current bylaw, which is what we have in front of us there. Um, including the gutter line, uh, the the full street width is eleven meters, um, five and a half meter lane widths. So that allows for full-on street parking on both sides of the street. And I've also come up, spent a little bit of time picking a few areas in the community where this bylaw has been applied, just um. For reference, and so when we flip through them, just keep an eye on how many cars you see parked on the street in each each example. So we'll go to the next slide now. So this is um Alfred Crescent is off of Toronto Street um near railway. Go to the next slide, please. This is Third Avenue um in the Willville subdivision. This is Driftwood Crescent in the Silver King subdivision. And the last one's Eleventh Avenue, kind of behind the hospital there. And so each of these uh examples um are. Are streets that have followed the the town bylaw and um of all four examples, there were only three cars parked on the street. There was about two hundred meters worth of road visible or four hundred meters worth of um on-street parking. Three cars parked on the streets, about five percent utilization of the on-street parking. Now, I understand that this is just a snapshot in time. It doesn't necessarily represent peak parking demand. But it does help to show that uh in a lot of our residential streets, um, we have far more supply for on-street parking than there is actually demand. We'll go to the next slide. Um, so reasons to reconsider um using the town's existing bylaw. Uh, as mentioned, the on-street parking is underutilized on Princess Street currently, as it is on many of the residential streets in town. Um, by giving up space that um is traditionally, you know, allocated for vehicle parking, we create more space for other users. And we start to shift the focus in the community from uh vehicle dependency to more active transportation um focused modes. Um, and then again, this is really just a great opportunity to consider alternatives. Because we're about to go into the process of fully redesigning the street and uh reconstructing it. Um, so what we're talking about is trying to approach the design from a bit more of a complete streets perspective. Complete streets design in small municipalities promote safer, more accessible transportation options for all users. Enhancing community connectivity and public health. They also reduce infrastructure costs and environmental impact by encouraging sustainable transportation modes like walking and cycling. We can skip past this slide. So why Princess Street? Well, Princess Street has um. A few daycares, it has a few parks, um, it has a school and an assisted living um. Next to it, um, it's also a direct connection to the Cycle Sixteen Trail. Um, so it is well situated as a as a corridor for active transportation. Um, and. It uh it's a real opportunity to to supplement space that is currently planned to be given to vehicle parking to. Um, more active transportation modes. So um. For the cross-sections that we're proposing, um. We have used a software called Beyond Typicals, which is what you see there. Um, and so we take a an existing photo and then render. The typical section over top of it. Um, we do have these in video format, but unfortunately, the presentation didn't didn't quite work out as planned tonight. But uh, here we are. So this is the existing conditions of Princess Street. Um, the. Existing pavement width is seven point four meters. And so for reference, if we were to follow the existing bylaw, we would be widening that to eleven meters. And so um. You know, we would be significantly widening the street to create uh space for on-street parking. On a street where the demand for that parking is not uh gonna match that supply. We'll go to the next slide. This is um one of the options that we've explored and um. This option changes uh or basically just reallocates the space that is dedicated to on-street parking to unidirectional bike lanes. It's the uh same configuration that has been applied to King Street, which I think has been a fantastic improvement. One of the the benefits to this option is that it actually requires no geometric change. Um, it's just following the town bylaw, but. Applying um line painting to dedicate space to cyclists. Um, and so there is. Dedicated uh space for cyclists, um, but the drawback is you're not physically separating um the cyclists from vehicle traffic. So it's an improvement, but. Um, not the ideal uh active transportation. Mode. We'll go to the next slide. Um, I can skip past this one. And so option number two. Is uh giving up on-street parking on one side of the street. Um, and then basically just giving that space to a widened sidewalk or a multi-use pathway. Um, some of the the benefits to this option are that you still maintain uh one lane of on-street parking. Um, you are creating physical separation for cyclists and pedestrians on the multi-use pathway. Um, the space that you give up um from the on-street parking, most of it gets taken by the widened sidewalk, but not all of it. So it does result in. Uh, a reduction of half a meter of hard surfacing. One of the cons or uh drawbacks to this option is the reconstruction of Princess Street goes to Fifteenth Avenue. And so. There'd be a bit of a discontinuity from fifteenth to sixteenth and sixteenth is uh one of the the. Um, areas in the network plan um that is intended to uh convey pedestrians and cyclists. And we'll go to the next slide. We can skip past this one. Um, then our third option is similar to option two. Um, with the elimination of on-street parking on both sides of the street, um, it comes with many of the same. Pros and cons as option two, but uh it does create more space for um snow storage within the boulevard. Um, it reduces the hard surfacing uh even further. And so the cost to construct this option would likely be. Lower than the actual cost to follow the bylaw. Um, however, it does eliminate all on-street parking, which is uh likely to be opposed by some of the residents. Uh, along the street. Um, so to kind of conclude my thoughts, um, I think it largely comes down to. On-street parking. Um, and if on-street parking isn't being used, then it shouldn't be built as it's not a good use of capital funds. And if on-street parking is reduced, then it creates an opportunity to provide more space for for other road users. Um, not only is this an opportunity to rethink how we envision Princess Street to look in the future. But it's an opportunity to think about how all residential local streets could look to best suit the needs of our community. Thanks for taking the time to to hear us and hope you have a good evening.
Maybe just hang tough in case we have questions. Sounded like you were leaving, just in case. Okay, uh, thanks for that. Uh, council, questions? Okay, okay, Counsel Raven.
Um, I think this would be a question through to staff is now that I'm like. For a multi-use path, it would make sense to go all the way up to sixteenth. Is there a reason why we did it? Why we stopped at fifteenth rather than going all the way up? Because Ranger Park is there?
Mr. Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Raven. It's just that the uh the scope of the design was only to Fifteenth Avenue. So I think if we do select the. Uh, multi-use pathway to change from the standard sidewalk on the on that side, then we would consider. Taking that right to sixteen. Yeah, sixteen is a collector's street and is part of the active transportation plan. So, thanks.
I see you, Counsel. I'm just gonna do a follow-up to that question and then I'll go to Counsel Ray. Um. I don't really get that when you said the scope work is only to fifteenth and with that, maybe you could tell me that part. And then why wouldn't we go all the way up? Princess like right to eighteen, like if we're gonna actually have a road rebuild and redesign. And people are commenting on the quality of the sidewalks, like why don't you just do the whole street?
Yep, that's uh excellent comment and that's uh something we can bring back to council if that's. A consideration for um amend. We will need to amend the active transportation plan itself to incorporate the. The Princess Street, um, whether it's a multi-use pathway or other active transportation. So. That would definitely be a consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Yeah, I think even if we weren't gonna do anything but build a sidewalk, it would just make sense to do the whole street. But uh, Counsel Ray.
Yeah, I um just commented on that. Uh, there is brand new sidewalk between fifteenth and sixteenth, I believe. So, I mean, if it makes sense to keep to to construct it, but we're essentially gonna be ripping up brand new infrastructure. Um, this is also a question through to staff. Does this mean that we're giving up on Main Street as being um? You know, from the highway up as being an active transportation corridor?
Mr. Allen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atrol. No, actually, uh, Main Street is still um part of the active transportation plan to include. Um, I think it's bicycle lanes on both sides of Main Street. So no, it would not take that away from the plan if we included Princess Street.
Counsel Ray.
Thanks. I'll save everything else for the comment period.
Okay, I I have just a couple of questions on. Things I just don't understand in the drawing. So I'm on the option to the picture. MEP with on-street parking, actually all of them. I'm just wondering whether this is to you or to Mr. Allen. With the big boulevards, the only thing I heard you said, the large boulevard is a place where we can store snow, but. What do we do with the big boulevards? If we don't do anything with them, I can see you laughing, Mr. Allen. So. Like, why would we wanna have a massive boulevard? Like unless we're actually gonna turn it into something.
Yeah, I can start off and then uh Mr. Kindred could uh back me up, but um. Yeah, it it's just so happens that our road right of ways are twenty meters wide. Um, and if we narrow our road surface, yes, we we have the the large boulevards. Um, they can be. Um, seen as just adding uh green space to the community. Um, that's that's a factor and um. It it can also be used for uh street trees if that's another option that council wants to pursue.
Thank you. I'm I'm not sure if you had any other thing you wanted to add there, Mr. Kindred.
Sure, yeah. Um, and I think for me, I wanted to frame the discussion in. Um, you know, why are we building these super wide streets that allow for, you know, full-on-street parking if there isn't actually a need for that? And so I think um that option two was kind of a nice uh meet in the middle where we're giving up on-street parking on one side. And then we just give that space to a wider sidewalk, a sidewalk that can facilitate cyclists and pedestrians. I don't think that there's a zero demand for parking on Princess Street, but um certainly there isn't demand for full-on-street parking. And so I think. We should think about reallocating that space to other road users.
Thank you, Mr. Dore.
I believe and correct me if I'm wrong, another attribute of the boulevard would have that dedicated protective space between the pedestrians and the the. Uh, vehicular traffic as well.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Dore. I was actually looking at this one, like the one. Where we just have like a massive boulevard. Um, and I I fully support like planting street trees and making the canopy. You know, creating shade and future space. I was just curious um with that. Creating shade and future space. I was just curious with that option three. It's just it's one heck of a boulevard. And I think we we share the maintenance with residents as well. So if we're providing a really big boulevard, I think that's ours to look after, Mr. Allen.
Yeah, and and the reason I mentioned the twenty-meter right-of-way is typically the street is the center line of the street is typically the center line of the right-of-way as well. So that's 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 the reason for the white boulevard.
Okay, council, any other questions? Clarification of our delegation? Okay, thank you. Thanks for thinking of something and bringing us some ideas to consider. This is the time before we build something. So much appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, so then council, we have go back to the beginning. So we have the recommendation that we it's a fairly general comment, just that we modify the current road standards and take this to public engagement. What's your pleasure? Council Raven, Council Raven moves recommendation. Is there a second or? Council Leonard seconds. And then just for clarity on that, so this, these ideas in total will go out to the public for for feedback. Okay, that's great. Any last comments, Council Raven?
Well, just commenting on that is, um, you know, this is the time to be looking at doing things a bit differently. And I really do appreciate that it's several options that will be going to the public. It's not like we're saying like, hey, here is here's the one idea and go from there. So I just really appreciate that. Yeah, this is not a decision just for the stable, but we're putting it out to the public and I can't wait to hear feedback.
Thanks, Council Raven, Council Ray.
Yeah, um. I I'm not necessarily opposed to going out to the public as long as as long as the current street standard is one of the options that's being discussed with the public. I I think we need to talk about if we're if we're building a new one, and I think this is the time to do it. Is are we going to modify the entire town's standards to always have bike lanes on everything that's built? That needs to be part of the discussion because we're doing it now because we're rebuilding Princess, but if we have an active transportation plan, bike lanes on Main Street and then a block away, we also have bike lanes. That seems a little surpoot, surpoot. It seems extra. If if we're not planning to do it all over town, then there doesn't need to be one a block away from. If we're just doing cycling spines and active transportation spines, then we don't need one a block over. If we're going to do the whole standard, then let's talk about that. Are we going to have bike lanes on every road and everything? And and I I don't. You know, you know how it been about that, but if it's if it's something the community wants, we represent the community. And so if they want bike lanes on every street, then let's make that the standard. So we don't have to discuss it every time we're building a street. The other thing that, you know, I've been a little concerned about lately as we've applied for things and it's been really driven home here. I'm walking on a multi-use in Vancouver or in Burnaby, actually. And I'm constantly looking over my shoulders. I'm walking at people on electronic bikes and electronic scooters. That, I mean, I don't know if that really is active transportation, but it scares me as a pedestrian because I don't have a rearview mirror and they're very quiet. It just, that's something I think we need to talk about what we're going to let on our our multi-use pathways as well. Before we build the whole thing out, we're all dodging electronic. It seems to work okay, but it's scary. So just that kind of, if we can include that kind of conversation in the public. Those kinds of conversations in the public, I think if we're going out to the public for one street, we might as well have the whole conversation. So I'll vote in favor. And then we'll see what we come up with.
Thanks, Council Ray, Council Buickman.
Thanks, Mary Rachel. Yeah, I I as this conversation goes all over the place, like I think we have to be careful to and not think we can eliminate all on-street parking like I I live in town and walk a lot. And I see an incredible number of cars parked on streets. So I think there's places where we can do it. But let's not do too much. We still live in a car culture and we also have a lot of people from neighboring communities that drive into Smithers and need places to park. And I think we shouldn't lose sight of that.
Thanks, Council Buickman. Council Leonard.
When I read through this, I I love the concept. I love the idea. Maybe it doesn't completely jive with with the active transportation plan, but to Mr. Allen's point and to the point we were just discussing with the Parks and Rec plan. Plans can be changed and and maybe they should be. I think that we're, you know, we have a great opportunity because it has to be, the whole street has to be redesigned or rebuilt due to infrastructure issues. So we do have an opportunity and and I think the I agree, I don't think we should be eliminating parking entirely, but I did go by. I drove down Princess twice in the last two days. So once was on Sunday, once was today. And no cars. So I'm not saying that that that's never the case, but it wasn't when when I went. So. You know. Send it to public consultation. And I mean, my favorite is number two because it because it does, you know, favor some parking, doesn't take it all away and and separates the pedestrians. So.
Thanks, Council Leonard, Council Ray, Raven.
It's all good. It's been a night. So and and just to echo what Council Leonard says, like what I like with the pub, public consultation on this specific project rather than doing community-wide is because you can make a decision on what's good for that street. I would be very hesitant to completely change the bylaw or the road construction for the entire town. I like it on a street-by-street basis. I am like Council Leonard, I'm inclined to do number two because, I mean, I used to take my kids to Princess Park quite a bit and I live out of town, so I would have to park beside the park. But yeah, no, so I definitely do like the idea of just the public consultations fantastic for the people that are on that street and seeing what works there because what works there will not work on Alfred or railway or anywhere else. So.
Thanks, Council Raven. I can't remember which one of you sort of commented, perhaps it was Council Ray commenting on multi-use pathways and the fact that everybody is there. So. When I look at I forget which one. You know, it it's option one that actually does separate pedestrians from cyclists. And I think the issue of other devices is only going to become more critical as time goes on because people are going to use other things they do already. So we're not going to stop people from using the devices of choice. And at the risk of throwing in a wild card for Mr. Allen, if that street is so wide, if money were no object, why can't you have sidewalks and bike lanes and parking like it roads actually wide enough? Okay, so it is an option. There's nothing under that boulevard that's that you couldn't actually put a sidewalk over. Or a bike lane. Ms. Hoagland, yeah.
One issue of Princess Street that might restrain it from having enough space for a sidewalk, bike paths, on-street parking and room for cars is that there is a bit of slope to the street. And so within the boulevard, you'd also have to consider grading. So if your houses are at a higher or lower elevation than the road, you would need space to grade that from the road to the property line.
Okay, thanks for that. But yeah, it's just a curiosity. Like when we haven't built anything, it's a time actually to think about it. And I, you know, again, I've forgotten who said what, but if we're going to have multi-use paths and bike lanes, there might be a really good reason why we have to have one on Princess plus Main. We might want to have a recognition of having pedestrians and cyclists on all streets because that's actually what happens now. People use whatever street they want and trying to do it safely. But I think, you know, it will be interesting to have the public conversation on what makes sense to enable people to get through town just on that one street safely. And it will, this will be a fairly interesting conversation for how we plan other streets in the future. So anyway, really interesting, Mr. Kendrick.
Yeah, there was just one more point I wanted to make, and that is on the volume of pedestrians and cyclists. And so B C has an active transportation design guideline from twenty nineteen, so pretty recent. That outlines when multi-use paths are no longer appropriate because the volume of cyclists and pedestrians is so high that conflicts become a larger issue. And from our understanding, the the volume of pedestrians and cyclists in a small municipality like Smithers doesn't warrant full separation, or it is less of an issue.
Thanks. That's good information. Okay. The recommendation is on the floor. Are you ready? All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Thanks. No, he was, I saw the thumb up. So Council Ray, you were in favor? Yep. It's the signal of thumb up, thumb down that helps when the timing is a little out. Thanks for checking though, Miss. Okay. Thanks so much, folks, for coming and being a part of it and hanging out. It's a long evening for everyone. Okay. So I think we're at fourteen-three, which is the Smithers Airport electronics or electronic locks. A report from Mr. Blackburn. And there is a recommendation, Mr. Blackburn, is there anything you wanted to add at the outset?
Thanks, Mary Rachel. I'll wait for the questions. I think it might be easier.
Okay, all right. Someone want to put the recommendation on the table? Council Raven, you're moving. Okay, Council Buickman seconds. Questions or comments? Looks like you might have a quiet evening here, Mr. Blackburn. I didn't either, so I'm not going to belabor it. I think I'm just going to call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? That's that's carried unanimously. Wise call. Okay, fourteen-four is the report for Mr. Schroeder, the appointment of the deputy corporate officer with the recommendation. Someone want to move the recommendation? Council Leonard, Council Raven? Any discussion or questions? All right, I'm going to call vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. And I'll just acknowledge Miss Smith is with us and congratulations. New deputy corporate officer. It's a mouthful. We'll get used to saying it. Thank you. Okay, fourteen-five, a report from Miss Smith on the privacy management policy and the required amendment. There is a recommendation, but if there's questions for clarity first, I'll take them. You're not seeing any. Someone like to put the recommendation on the floor? Council Buickman? Council Leonard? Everyone's waiting. Hands up. Okay, it's on the floor. That's both points. Any questions for staff? It's, um. When we did this at the regional district, it did require some training. So I'm waiting for that ax to drop for council. Is that coming?
It certainly is, Your Worship.
Okay, all right. With that, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Fourteen-six is a report from, thank you, Miss Smith, report from Mr. George on the B C Transit Annual Operating Agreement. There are recommendations. And if there are questions, we can actually let's put it on the floor and then we'll do the questions. Council Raven? Council Ray, thank you. Okay, questions or Mr. George, was there anything you wanted to add at the outset? Questions for staff? Give you a second. We've been screaming along here. Mr. George.
Thank you. Through Your Worship to council while council's just going through that. I did want to bring note to under the discussion section here. This report is a annual report for the annual operating agreement for B C Transit for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five year. I'll just note to council in the discussion se- section a a celebration for our local transit system here and the recent award that the Smithers Community Services Association received as a transit superstar. There was a group of transit service providers that were acknowledged across the province, nine of them. And Smithers was recognized as one of them. So just want to to save space and recognize them at this meeting.
Thanks, Mr. George. And I think most of you know, I sit on the board of B C Transit and it was acknowledged at the board level as well, not just Smithers, but including Smithers for the the cool job that's done here. So really lovely to share that. Okay. Council Leonard.
I probably asked this last year, too. I'm just wondering how the funding agreement was. Like how we came up with the numbers, how we came up with the balance being Smithers, the seventy-seven percent.
I don't think there's anyone around the table. Maybe Council Ray has been here. No, not even Council Ray has been here long enough to know how we started. I don't know if anyone can help with some of how we're here now. Council Leonard.
Maybe I'll just cut to the chase. I'm just curious if there's an appetite for renegotiating that agreement and, you know, based on ridership and you know, if anybody's thought about that or if it's even doable.
Thanks, Council Leonard. It certainly has been asked. You're not the, even in my time, it's you're not the first counselor that has noted that and asked about it. I think Mr. George is going to comment. Even in my time, there has been a change from the original. I think the original was paratransit, then there was Smithers Telqua. What set was added on. And so there have been comments over my time at council. You know, in many ways, while Smithers is the main payor, in part because we're the bigger community, that a lot of the people utilizing transit are coming to utilize our services as well. And so there has been recognition of, you know, the the businesses in Smithers, not just businesses, but certainly people come from medical appointments for education, but that our community is the main beneficiary as well. So one can argue it. It's interesting. The same conversation is going to be on the regional district table for the different transit system we are a partner in. And whether or not other communities are feeling like they're, they ought to continue or whether or not they will continue. And it's likely that a couple of communities will withdraw from the service up and down the highway. So things like this work when we all participate. And so, Mr. George, I know you were going to add something, but I'll give it to you and I probably have something else to say on transit.
Thank you, worship through to Councilor Leonard. I would just note as well that for the future of transit in Smithers, we're going through the Smithers Transit Future Service Plan. So we have the Transit Committee that meets regularly here and we're having those conversations and this will be a full-year process, looking at ridership, looking at the routes, making sure that information and engagement is is available for for council, for staff, as well as the community, the whole to participate in. So we're just dotting the i's and crossing the t's of that, the start of that full engagement plan. So I would say questions like this is very, very important as we enter into that year year process to determine what the next five years will look like for our community in transit. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. George. Uh, Council Ray.
Well, I I do think that any change to the the funding agreement is going to have to, if if that's how council feels, is going to have to come from Smithers because we pay the lion's share of it. Telqua gets credit for storing for bus parking that I've always thought is a little high. I might think differently if I was a Telqua counselor though. But I don't think any of the other communities, I'll leave Winston out of that because that's actually more of a fifty-fifty. But the there's there's disagreement on how much benefit it provides to Area A, for example, because it doesn't go into Area A really at all. For stops and and it's hard for some of the residents to pick it up, but if we feel it's unfair that we're paying too much, I think the time is when when we're doing that engagement around the future transit plan. So if others feel the same way, then, you know, I we can certainly initiate the con, the conversation.
Okay, now we got hands. I'm going to go to Council Leonard, then Council Raven.
I just asked the question. I I'm curious. I just asked the question. I I'm curious about the data and glad to hear that Mr. George has a plan in place for for that information for council. I do, you know, I believe that transit is an essential service in communities, so. But I would also like to be able to justify it to to our taxpayers.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard. Counsel Raven?
Well, and just tack of that, I I agree that transit is extremely important, and especially since a lot of the more vulnerable populations use transit. So I definitely acknowledge that. But at the same time, I was also kind of shocked to see seventy-seven percent born by Smithers. That that seems a bit excessive. And I do agree that I believe that the agreement with wit set for fifty percent makes sense. But yeah, I would definitely be open to exploring the conversation on cost sharing in a in a new way.
Thanks, folks. I think the only thing I'd say is that right now you know, transit systems are a bit challenged and you know, it's always the time to ask questions, absolutely. But Smithers, since the onset, has paid more. You know, I don't know if we, I don't, I don't know if it adds up per capita. I don't really know how that works. Someone could figure it out for me. But I do think that Smithers is the recipient of the people for the most part. And so folks come to town to go to doctor's appointments. They come to town to buy groceries. They come to town to get goods, and in some cases, don't have other alternatives. And so this is, this is a service where I think it is worth being a part of it in order to keep it together. You know, I, we are seeing this at the regional district table where there is a chance that a an in look at intra and inter intercity transit system might be at jeopardy because folks are looking at it as what what do I get for it? And this is one of those services where I think we're we're asked to sort of just look up a little bit, that we're come together, we're putting together some money to provide a service that otherwise won't be there. And I can tell you, when I look at some of the community transit systems in other parts of the province, we are very lucky here that citizens can go between Telqua and Smithers, between what's what's at and Smithers, and that we still have a system that's pieced together. But people can get on a bus in Rupert and Terrace, and they can work their breakthrough. It's not ideal. There's a better, you know, there there is a better system or a better schedule for passengers, and there's work being done to make it better. But I would be very reticent to start taking this apart. Doesn't mean you can't ask for for more money or you know, but I would just be very ginger because there is sort of a feeling among some communities, like now is the time to pay less. And the cost will be that we won't have a transit system. And I think this community, Counsel Ray remembers more of this than I do. Was certainly at the table, trying to figure out how do we get more transportation service, not less, in particular for people that have no alternative. So I will definitely support this. You know, having a parallel conversation about funding is one thing, but I think the service is worth it. Okay. Anybody else? The motion is on the floor. Are you ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Mr. George. Okay, we have a report from Mr. Lee. This might be the first report I've seen from Mr. Lee. It was a very good report. With form and character, we still have Mr. Vetch who's hanging in with us for the evening with the recommendation that we approve the form and character permit application and incorporate point A, incorporate the substantial natural building materials into the facade. Okay. I guess, Mr. Allen, anything you wanted to add? Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Autrowell. Yeah, the condition is for that a number A, which is reflected in the draft permit as well. I think it's something, if we do leave it in the permit, I know Mr. Vetch has requested that it be removed from the permit. But I do think staff can work with the applicant to you know, recognizing that the landscaping additions have softened the appearance of the the building from the street. Just just to better meet the design guidelines for, you know, the word substantial naturing, natural building materials. So I don't, I think that's something we, it doesn't need to come back to council. I think it could, it could stay in, and we could just work with the applicant to that end.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Counsel, any questions? Okay, um. There's probably some fine lines there. I tend to be the person who supports the guidelines and wanting things to look sort of as as good as we can and keep the standards as high as we can. I have felt like we are kind of diminishing isn't the right word, but altering things so that we alter the end look. I heard what you said, Mr. Allen. So I'm prepared to support as is here and take, you know, if there's something that does need to come back to council, bring it back. But I support the the design guidelines as we have them. Counsel Ray?
Yeah, I am. When I'm looking at the pictures, it depends really where you're looking at it, about how much natural is there. There is some brickwork.
Sorry, Counsel Ray, you, Counsel Ray? You just broke up a little bit. Would you mind starting again?
Sorry about that.
If you can remember what you said.
I'm on hotel wifi. What can I say? I am. I, when I look at the design, actually, the thing that really strikes me isn't lack of natural. It's just that it's black and white. And, you know, part of the reason we updated the Alpine theme was that it was starting to look a little bit dated. It had some timeless features to it, but it did, some of it did still look dated. And I'm a little bit worried with all the kind of the trend seems to be black and white. And I think in ten or fifteen years, this is all going to look dated. I think if the building, you know, not that I'm going to mandate the color change, but I think part of it is is that they're just all starting to kind of look the same because there's a lot of black, there's a lot of dark gray. But I I do see brickwork. I do see natural timber, and I think that, you know, the staff can work with the developer. And I think overall, it's going to be a great project for the community. So I'll vote in support and and trust this that the staff will be able to to do it without substantially altering the timelines, et cetera.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Counsel Bukema?
Thanks, Mayor Autrowell. Yeah, I mean, I I like the design myself. I think it's a great-looking building. I'm excited about the addition of eight apartments into the downtown core. Again, I think the addition of all the medical clinics on the bottom is, again, something badly needed in our town. I was happy to read that the developer recognizes that the development costs have to be a hundred percent borne by builder and developer. And yeah, I'm definitely in favor.
Thanks, Counsel Bukema. Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Counsel Bukema, for drawing us back to the bigger picture, too. I sort of fell into the the details right away. So when I first read this and looked at the proposal, and when I heard Mr. that speaking earlier, and I think about what it looks like right now, which is like a chunk of ground behind a fence, I think way better. So certainly welcome the development for all kinds of reasons. That will be nice activity, a nice building, increased housing, all those things really do hit the mark. So yeah, thanks, Counsel Bukema, for reminding us what we're talking about in the big picture. That's great. Already. And I forget, I think the motion's on the floor? No, no motion on the floor. Okay, could I have a mover? Counsel Raven, are you moving the total recommendation? Okay, is there a second or Counsel Bukema, seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Okay, thanks, everyone. Okay, thanks, Mr. Vetch, for hanging in. Alrighty, we are at fourteen eight. We're back on the number track now. So what we have here is a report from Mr. Weed in the Building Inspector recommending a note against land title for fifteen twenty-seven Columbia Drive. We have with us in the gallery, she's persevered with us all evening as well. Ms. Raging Laidlaw, and I'm just going to look to Mr. Schroeder. Is this the right moment to invite Ms. Laidlaw up to speak?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Perhaps we could let Mr. Allen speak to the report, and then afterwards, we can call her to the
Okay, so, Mr. Allen, if there's anything you wanted to say, and then we'll bring up Ms. Laidlaw. She'd like to speak.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Autrowell. Just on behalf of our building inspector. We did have a legal opinion on this, and and we are following the secondary suite policy that the town has. I did forget to include that in the in the report, unfortunately, but we do have a policy. And we are following that in this case. And we do deal with all other secondary suite. You know, suspect secondary suites in the community the same way. So I think the the main point is that you know, it's been recommended that to limit the the town's exposure for a building that doesn't meet the building code. It's it's wise to to place the note on title. Just, it basically just states that, as noted in the report, the items that that are deficient. And then I think the key message is because the the owner has has actually initiated the building permit process. So when that, when that building per permit is completed and it and the building's brought into compliance, then the the notice can be removed as per Section fifty-eight in the in the charter, which is also included. So I think with that, I think if council agrees to recommendation one, then we can hear from the owner.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Okay, so let's get recommendation one on the table. Counsel Bukema? Counsel Raven, all in favor? Okay, so with that, Ms. Laidlaw, if you wanted to address this, please come forward. Counsel Bukema, just to get you to shut your mic off?
I'm sorry.
No problem. And either chair, it doesn't matter. And you can see the circle on the mic stand when you press it, your mic goes live. Except that Counsel Ray won't hear you without it. I'm sorry, what's a notice of title?
Sorry, could you repeat the question? My apologies.
What's a notice of title? That's not, that's outlined. It's in what it's it's put on me, but nobody's explained to me what it is. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I can, I can explain that. It is basically what is stated in the in the background that upon the inspection by the building inspector, just noting the the bulleted deficiencies.
Right, okay.
So that the notice, it's held in the office, so it's, there's a requirement by the town to hold the info, this information in for view. It's for view by the public or yourself.
Right, okay.
But the note on title itself is is just simply a a form that is completed, and it's registered on the title.
Right, okay. Okay, so just going forward as I received the letters. Oh, okay, let's back it up. Do you want to know the story? Do I have two minutes to you? I have a house fifteen twenty-seven up on Columbia, and it is a large house. And I wanted to split it up into different units. We all knew that the bill Bill forty-four was coming in May. So back last summer, there was a need for, it, the house was already had one unit in it. And there was a need with an elderly gentleman who needed a place because he was removed from the hospital. He was living over in the Aspen at six thousand dollars a month. And I was going to be converting the second space in the basement into another suite as soon as Bill forty-four came through. So I went ahead and did it, and I actually altered the suite with a walk-in tub and whatnot, so he would actually have a place to live. I then had the house on the market, which then came to light that I had two suites in the basement, which were not allowed under the bylaw in February at the time. So I got the compliance letter, and on the beginning of June, I did send a letter to the building inspector that I had taken out the kitchen of the second unit, so it was no longer considered a unit that is a unit in the basement now, because you can actually get between the two units in the basement. Then putting in my building permit. There was some issues with the building permit that it couldn't be taken in because we needed house plans. So I put in request for my house plans at the same time through the town, knowing that the house is built in nineteen eighty-four. And then I got the letter that you don't have the house plans because well, that wasn't really answered why the house plans plans weren't here. Because now we need the house plans to go ahead to do the altercations to the house to make it fire compliant, to make it health and safety compliant, and the separation of the units. Since Bill forty-four came in, I was looking at the different configurations you can have for units and what the house would adhere to. And I was thinking, maybe I wanted to put it into four units, but I would like to keep it in three units, which means the top of the house is all one, the two units in the in the basement. But that didn't comply to any of the multiple housing options that were available through the province until I had a conversation with Deepa on Friday. And her suggestion was quite plain and simple, that this would just be a house with two basement suites. And we'd look for a variance from the bylaw when that could be done. Now, before I can go ahead and do the altercations and upgrade to the fire and the health and the egress and all that safety, I need house plans. And everyone's on vacation in the summer, so I've reached out twice to the architectural engineer firms that are in town, gotten response once, put in my request for their services, never heard back. So I'm finally in talks with Heritage Architecture. And he's on vacation. So I'm sort of stuck in this holding pattern. In the meantime, the house only has one occupant in the in the bottom section of the house right now. So that's where we stand with that. Yeah, I I think it's a new configuration of a house that going forward, I think is a great option because building rentals in this, in this, in this, in this economy is not all that profitable, or it's, you know, builders can't charge the rents that they need to cover what it costs to build. But a lot of the houses and the size of the houses in our town can actually are, to convert them to rentals is an option, I believe. So I think, you know, talking with Mark, we want to have meetings going forward with Mark and with the building inspector. But first, we need to get my house plans done somehow. And do we know what happened to the house plans? Do we, back in the eighties, what happened to house plans? Destroyed or burnt, or the microfiche machine ate them up? So that's where I'm sitting right now. Okay, thank you. I just checked for the benefit of council with Mr. Schroeder. It's not that common that we're in this particular process where we're discussing a note on title. So for council's benefit, if you have some questions of clarity, it's fine to go ahead and ask. So I'll just look to the table first if anyone has a question of Ms. Laidlaw while she's here. Or for staff, for that matter, but in particular for Ms. Laidlaw. Okay. So what I'm taking, I have one, so I'm just going to ask. So what I've taken from your description of what's happening is right now, you're moving through the steps as best you can to bring the house into some sort of legal compliance, whatever number of steps you end up, okay? Yeah, and you're in, you're working with our staff plus heritage technical. Yes, okay, yes. So and I'm going to say what I think about the notice on title, and Mr. Allen and Mr. Schroeder can correct me if I'm wrong. So it is something that simply alerts future buyers. If you were to, you know, put it up for sale tomorrow, someone's going to do a title search, and they'll see that there's something not quite up to legal one hundred percent with the property. Right, it doesn't prevent you from doing things. It's simply a notice that would protect a future buyer, and it protects us saying that we've done our due diligence. We've noted this deficiency, and here we go. So, okay, Mr. Schroeder, Mr. Allen, correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. So just one addition that if there is a, you know, unfortunate Uh, thank you, Mayor. So just one addition that if there is a, you know, unfortunate event at the house, fire or whatever, then, uh, the note on title does limit the test exposure as well.
Thank you for the clarity. Okay, since that's what's being asked of council is in the next, um, bullet when we get there is to approve, um, the note on title. So just so we're all clear. So it doesn't prevent you from doing anything that you're doing, from continuing to work. It provides some liability protection for us in the event that something does go wrong in the next while. So just so we all kind of understand what the next piece is. Just looking around the table in case there's another question. Okay. We're going to move on to that and that's not a piece where we'll be talking to you. So if there's anything else you want to say, now is kind of your time and then we'll end this piece and we'll move on to the next recommendation, which is actually, uh, the recommendation to approve the note on title. So just so we're clear because we want to ensure that you have all the opportunity to speak so that you feel like you've had that full. No, that's fine. Um, no, it's just, um, from speaking with Mark, that's sort of the first time that this has sort of been presented to do something with a residential building as like this, um, and to do it all legally and to do it all up to code and up to, up to specs. It would be good to note it in case somebody else wants to do it, like what they have to have. I've found the whole process, um, a little confusing, but what I needed and what, um, cause I have done other renovations in the town before, have come to ask for a permit and told I didn't need one. Like this was, you know, if I wasn't doing anything structural, then I didn't need the permit. So, um, yeah, it would be good to have a clearer process available to other homeowners or to people who need to or who want to put in, because we all know that there are many suites in this town that are not registered with the town. And people who do want to sell their home, who do want to, um, register those suites with the home for the, um, access, you know, garbage pickup and all the other amenities that the town offers, that we're all working backwards from it. So it would be, uh, a little more advantageous for other homeowners to have it recorded what needed to be done. Just because I've found it rather, and don't ever do it in the summer because everyone goes on vacation. That's, that's about it. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, one last around the table if there's questions. All right, then I'm going to thank you for taking the time to sit with us this evening. And also for connecting with staff to sort of move your project on and get it, you know, sort of aligned with the rules that we, we are required to support. Okay, right. So then we're going to carry on. Just, oh, sorry, one more question. Absolutely. Um, when talking with Deepa and the suggestion of the variance on the bylaw for having two suites in the house instead of one, is it more advantageous for me to do all the work first and then ask for the variance or to get the variance first and then go ahead and do the work? Mr. Allen?
It would be a requirement to actually proceed with the variance before doing the work.
Okay.
So that's, that's a conversation we'll have to have between staff and, uh, Ms. Laidlaw.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, another thing to note. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. You bet. If you don't mind, as you walk away, hit that button again. Yep. Thanks, Rajene. Okay, council, then with that, the next one is recommendation two. If there's questions of clarity, we'll take them now or see if someone wants to move the recommendation. Okay, we're at the motion for the recommendation. Counsel Buca, sir, a second or Counsel Raven, discussion, Counsel Ray? Or are you seconding?
Well, i- if you're asking me, I was seconding, but, um, just that for council, this is a fairly simple, um, it's not like before when we were doing, um, remediation orders, et cetera. So this is just simply doing our due diligence and protecting the, um, the township and by extension, the taxpayers from liability. Actually, I do have a question though, is, is, um, Mr. Allen said it can be removed after the building's brought up back up to code. Is there a mechanism where it would just be done automatically or does the person who owns the property have to apply to have it removed?
Mr. Allen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor O'Trell. I, I believe that's something, uh, staff can take the steps to, uh, proactively, uh, make that happen and, you know, provided everything is, uh, meets the, uh, intent of the building code and the, and the bylaw. So I don't think there's a, uh, that's something we'd have to double check if there's a application process, but I, I know that we don't have that process in our building bylaw. So it's just something that, uh, staff would do and we'd have to double check if it actually needed to come back to council or not. I'm not a hundred percent sure there.
Counsel Ray?
Yeah, it sounds like, you know, um, Ms. Laidlaw is, is proceeding, you know, along the road. My concern would just be that, um, you know, should, should you choose to stop and it changes hands and it's five or six years on down the road? If we'll remember that it needs to be removed when, when things are brought back up. You know, like the housing, like the, the plans to the house, the longer things, uh, remain in the records, uh, the more likely they are to be lost. I just, I just kind of hoping that, you know, that that's not lost, um, that it does need to be removed once it's up to, up to code.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor O'Trell. I mean, that's part of the purpose is for the registration on title is, is, is that, uh, it's not lost. And then, um, you know, any note on title is a, um, it, it does affect the, it can affect the property value, for example. Uh, it can affect, um, uh, future owner from obtaining financing with a note on title. Um, so i- it's, it's a definite advantage to have it removed and, uh, yeah, there, it's a process that, uh, I've been involved with, uh, owners requesting it and staff just proceeding with having it done.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Counsel Buca.
Thanks, Mayor O'Trell. Um, so I moved the recommendation, I think for two main reasons. A, I think it's important that we uphold our secondary suite policy. And secondly, um, Mr. Allen hinted that if we do not, um, post this note against land title, there could conceivably be, conceivably be some liability issues for the town. And I think from that perspective, too, we need to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Buca. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any other hands. I'm going to call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Thanks. Okay, we are at fourteen nine. Report from Mr. Allen and this is on LB Warner Environmental Consultant House with the recommendation. Let's just put it on the floor. Can someone just move? Counsel Raven? Someone give me a second or Counsel Buca, thank you. Okay, let's speak to it then. Uh, Mr. Allen, is there anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mayor O'Trell. Just, just one little correction that, uh, in the, uh, resource section at the end of the report, um, uh, where we speak about approximately six point five two remaining in the, in the, uh, Northern Capital and Planning Grant Reserve, there's actually, upon further review, there is actually closer to, I think it's two point nine eight million remaining. And that's based on allocations rate to, um, twenty twenty-eight. And I think, uh, Mr. Dewar has provided that information, uh, as a separate handout. Just for council's information, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Okay, uh, council. Comments, questions? Alrighty. So I'm just going to speak to it. Uh, we all know this has been difficult. Uh, we have representatives from, uh, Nessa in the gallery and we're going to, we're, we're just in a position where we're going to have to go forward with things. So thanks, Mr. Allen. I know that this has been, um, effort for staff as well. So thanks for getting it to us. And I think we're probably just ready to vote. I'm just going to call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Alrighty. We're getting there. Um, report from Ms. LeBlanc, uh, fifteen one, and it is for information. I just wanted to say, cool. I'll leave it at that. Okay, moving on. Seventeens, we have a letter from Skinner Resources regarding, I mean, it just feels to me like this is done. Ms. Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mayor O'Trell. This has been scheduled for September eighteenth.
Thanks. Okay, so the letter just was slow coming to us and it's been taken care of. Thanks very much. So it's just going to be on the council UBCM calendar. Thank you for that. Okay, the eighteens, there's a whole bunch of them. What would you like to pull out? And I'll try to keep up.
Eighteen five, please, your worship.
Yeah, just let me, after saying I'll try to keep up, I'm going to try to keep up. Eighteen five. Anything else? I'm going to, uh, just speak to briefly eighteen three. And I'm going to note eighteen ten. So those are the ones I have. Last call. If, if you remember one, we'll adapt, but, um, let's, so Counsel Buca, I had eighteen five. So eighteen three was the one that I pulled up and I'll just note, because often with tourism, I do withdraw. This is not one where I'm in a conflict. It's about organizations. And I just happen to be fairly aware of MRDT. So there will be, um, a resolution on the floor. I support the position that is here from, uh, the BCD MOA that MRDT be used primarily for, um, tourism purposes. I think there is, you know, in some communities, a drive to use that for other things. So one of the communities who put a resolution for it has since withdrawn it, but it will still be on the floor of UBCM. So just wanted to note it. Um, Counsel Ray, eighteen five.
Um, before I say that, I, I want to echo what you said about eighteen three. You know, we're, we're able to vote our conscience at, uh, at UBCM when resolutions come up, but having been here when we raised it from two percent to three percent, it's there for tourism, uh, that, because that was the intent and I would like it to stay that way as well. Eighteen five, just kind of a public service. I don't know how the, um, UBCM executives dealt with this. But when we go to UBCM, only registered delegates can speak and we do not allow ourselves to be lobbied to. Just in case it does come to a vote on the floor or something, I, I can't see it. But this is not the right way to, if, if we gave in to this demand for time to speak, we'll be hearing from all sorts of people. Uh, who are just there to lobby us. It, it seems a little bit hypocritical. We're there to lobby the provincial government, which is why we hear from the parties as well. They're, they're telling us what they would like to do or what they are doing. So it's, it's basically the, um, communication is supposed to be between the province and the communities and within the communities themselves. So, um, I hope I'm not old guy explaining this, but, um, that's why those are in place and why it's important to uphold them.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. There is always a way to for people to get subjects up by working with UBCM directly and, um, you know, the creation of sessions. So there are other ways for people to get, um, topics raised. Um, and the last one I wanted to mention was just eighteen ten, the letter from the city of Campbell River. And I just highlighted one sentence there. So it's just to highlight it because I think we, we feel the same sort of challenge. And in the third paragraph, first sentence, it just says, considering these challenges, we respectfully request that the province of D.C. take immediate action by making provincially regulated land available for temporary overnight camping in Campbell River. I just think that's a problem that we face here and raising it to the level of the province. I, I realize the province is aware. But I think it, you know, it was stated well in this letter. So I just wanted to, uh, speak to it. And that's it for me. Any other last eighteens that someone overlooked? Have I missed anything? Okay. Well, thanks for bearing with me with the shuffle of nerves and, um, you know, it was the staff worked hard to get us some presentations that I think enabled, um, discussion and dealing with the recommendations to go a bit better. So it was a little bit out of our normal way, but I think worthwhile. So thanks for that as well. And thanks to Mr. Schroeder for, uh, explaining it all to me ahead of time. With that, that last motion. Counsel Raven moves. Counsel Leonard, why don't you second the motion to adjourn? Okay, good. All in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Mayor O'Trell, for guiding us through that. It would have been hard to chair, changing all that, but I think it was, uh, for the best. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. See you next week.